Item is the approval of the order of the agenda.
Second.
Moved in second to, to accept the order of the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Alright. The order is approved. Next item, approval of the minutes from August thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the meetings as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. As her approved. Next item is an introduction. Elaine is not here, right? She's not coming tonight? Alright, well, we say farewell and thank you for her service. And welcome, Mr. Matthew Cobb. As the new zoning commissioner. Welcome. Alright. Next item is a regular agenda. First item within the regular agenda is public hearing A twenty-four dash twenty-five, the Yards, second addition, a request for conditional use permit for the installation of an above-ground fuel tank in an M-heavy industrial zoning different district at six forty-three Fifth Fifth Street Court Northwest, lot thirteen, block one of the Yards, second addition. Thank you.
Thank you. This application was received in order to allow a ten thousand gallon above-ground fuel tank for vehicles and equipment in a heavy industrial district. Above-ground class one and class two liquid storage tanks are provided for as conditionally permitted uses in the heavy industrial area. The applicant will need to provide plans showing spill containment as well as a foundation plan prior to issuance of a building permit. This has since been provided. Shows a double-walled tank showing the containment area. Conditional use permit agreement is required to be signed prior to issuance of the building permit and may include conditions deemed as appropriate by the commission. In terms of, in terms of criteria for granting a conditional use permit, no concerns were noted. We notified property owners within three hundred and fifty feet and applicable agencies and departments and no comments were received. It is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances with a condition that a signed conditional use permit agreement is received prior to the city commission meeting. This is a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions as is the applicant.
Thank you very much. So this is a public hearing, so I'll open it up for public comment or input at this time. Seeing none. Close that second. Commissioners, questions?
The tank is going to be right around this area right here, south of that building. Let's see.
Wait, I'm sorry, isn't it the green box that's?
The little green box right there. And there is.
And the double wall counts as the containment?
It has to be reviewed by the fire department, their standards. They'll, they'll review it and issue a permit. And then the building department also issues a permit for the foundation.
And, and that's the Cheyenne there, right?
Yes.
And the offset and the yeah, proximity to the river, that's
Let's see.
Also part of the permitting?
Right, yes. So they have to provide a containment area. The reason in the heavy industrial area, there's review for all tanks is because we allow for, you know, the Magellan Tank Farm over our main avenue. Those are the types of uses or a small tank like this for vehicle.
Right, it was what it was at?
This is proposed.
Casey's has something over there.
Right, and this is proposed as a diesel tank for fueling of their vehicles for excavating ink.
Okay, and, and the reason for it having to be a conditional use, the way it's structured is just so that all those things can be reviewed prior to permitting?
In some of, in the light commercial zoning district, it can, it can be conditionally permitted for a five hundred gallon tank with setbacks and they can only have one tank in the heavy commercial. I think there's limitations on size and distance requirements. It's just in the heavy industrial, it's done as a, in a case-by-case basis.
Any other questions? I'll accept the proposal.
Make a motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the application. Were there any conditions on that?
Conditional use permit agreement.
Yes, with the condition of one, the one condition noted by staff. Any further discussion prior to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay, item two, public hearing A twenty-four dash twenty-six, zoning ordinance amendments to title for regarding landscaping, screening, and outdoor storage.
Alright, thank you. Good afternoon. So this item has been on the discussion agenda the last couple of months, so I won't spend a whole lot of time talking about it. But in essence, this is a request for the planning and zoning commission recommendation to approve a zoning ordinance amendment regarding open space, or excuse me, landscaping, screening, and outdoor storage. In essence, this was some targeted text amendments to the zoning code was identified as a short-term priority project on the planning needs assessment completed a couple of years ago. And so this is, I think, kind of amendment number three out of four total amendments, if I'm not mistaken. That we're working on kind of one by one. And so this one specifically focuses on, primarily on the landscaping ordinance. The landscaping ordinance is, one of the ordinances that are particularly kind of hard to follow, if you will. There's multiple different spots to talk about different types of landscaping, whether it's buffering, screening, and whatnot throughout the code. And so the intention here is to simplify the ordinance, take those multiple different sections of code that all govern the same thing, bring it all into one spot, and then just make it more easy to follow. And so, in summary, the landscaping ordinance itself, there's five different landscaping requirements. One is for open space landscaping. That's, you're building a new building. That's just the general landscaping on the lot. The second requirement is for parking lot perimeter landscaping. That's applicable whenever you have a parking lot that's within so many feet of a public right-of-way or a public sidewalk, public street. If it's set back far enough, those requirements may not apply. The third requirement is parking lot island landscaping, and that's based on the size of the parking lot. Once you have a parking lot of sufficient, sufficiently large size, it requires some islands with some landscaping like trees and different things within the parking lot. The fourth requirement is boulevard trees. Those are the standard public street trees within the right-of-way. The city foresters is kind of the primary staff person that maintains and maintains the trees, but also maintains the requirements for spacing and placement of the trees and the tree types and species and things. And the last requirement is for buffer yards. Those are applicable in cases where we have more intensive land uses that are being developed adjacent to less intensive land uses. Like, for example, a commercial activity taking place next to a residential zoning district just requires some additional spacing and some additional trees between those two different uses. And so for the most part, pretty much all of these things are existing in the code today. We're just going to reshuffling the way that they're organized and then tinkering a little bit with some of the specifics of the parameters. And so I'd be happy to dive in in more depth on any one of those requirements if you'd like. Some other items of note that I wanted to mention here today. I know there was some discussion in the last time this was on the discussion agenda about preservation of mature trees. And so we did add some language in terms of any mature trees existing on the lot. They can count as double the plant unit value of a, of a new tree. So if you have a large mature tree, it counts as two small trees, for example, at the time of construction or development of the property. Additional thing to note is with the, with the landscaping updates that we're making, we do have a number of different overlay zoning districts and special purpose zoning districts that each one of those districts kind of has their own requirements for landscaping. There was an attempt made to kind of streamline some of that language and to refer back to the landscaping ordinance whenever possible. Again, the intent there is to get rid of any duplicative language. And then specifically to the Cheyenne River corridor overlay zoning district, there was some additional language added there in terms of riverbank preservation. And so the way that that one reads is any trees within fifty feet of the, the Cheyenne River, if, if a property owner does remove the trees, they have to, the stump and the roots have to remain in place. They're not allowed to excavate the stump and roots or to remove those within fifty feet of the river. That was, that requirement was done in conjunction with some conversation with Southeast Casswood Resource District in terms of, again, the main intent there is riverbank stabilization along the, the Cheyenne River. Which is, which is consistent with the purpose of that overlay zoning district. So that's this high-level summary of the landscaping standards. Some additional sections that we touched on here were the screening and outdoor storage, sections of the ordinance. Within our zoning district, the fencing and screening regulations, there again was some duplicative language when it came to the screening of outdoor storage areas. And so we're kind of consolidating some of those requirements there. We're updating and clarifying requirements for parking and storage of vehicles and equipment like cars, trailers, boats, RVs within residential districts. Nothing is really changing there substantially. It's, again, more reorganizing the way that, that section reads. Clarifying screening and fencing requirements for refuse containers and outdoor storage areas. And then same as the landscaping ordinance, we're also making some tweaks to some of those overlay zoning districts because each overlay zoning district kind of had their own set of requirements for screening of, you know, dumpsters and outdoor storage areas. So trying to get consistent across the board with what the, the requirements are, when and where an outdoor storage area or a dumpster area needs to be screened from view of the public or an adjacent residential zoning district for the most part. And then, yeah, lastly, just the buffer yard screening that was kind of moved over to the landscaping ordinance so that all the buffer yards are in one spot. So, again, very high level. There's a lot of detail in here. And so if there are specific questions, I'd be more than happy to dive in. But if there are no questions, the recommended motion tonight is to hold a public hearing and then to recommend approval to the city commission of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment. So with that, happy to answer any questions you may have for staff.
Thanks. I do actually have one question as far as the implementation of a change like this. How do we handle, you know, grandfathering in or, you know, because we're making some tweaks, as you mentioned?
Yep, yep.
Of properties that are already?
Yeah. So like any, any zone change or amendment to the ordinance, the way that anything is handled, including this change that's in front of you here today, existing properties are, as you mentioned, are grandfathered as they exist, provided they were legally, you know, developed legally at the time of permitting. There are certain trigger points, though, if development, you know, gets torn down and redevelops. You know, that would be a time where the redevelopment would need to meet the standards of today, not of yesterday. Additionally, there are some, and that's one thing we added with our landscaping ordinance is it does talk about things like changes in use and different expansions. So this applicability section here, current, our current ordinance doesn't really have an applicability section. And so that's always been kind of a gray area in terms of, you know, there's a business that's adding in addition. Does that trigger? And they don't meet current landscaping requirements. Does that trigger now that they do have to meet landscaping? The requirements here try to identify those, those different things. Same with changes in use. So if a change in use requires more parking spaces or is more intensive, it requires a more intensive zoning district than a previous use, that's when the landscaping provisions would be triggered. If it's just a change of use, like for like, no additional parking, no, no, you know, it's not a higher intensity use, then they don't have to apply, or they don't have to meet current landscaping ordinances and they continue to be grandfathered in. And so depending upon the specifics of the situation, the code will address it, you know, differently.
Okay, so that applicability section is what covers the
Yep.
trigger question?
Yep. And so it goes into detail on, you know, including, you know, existing parking lots.
Okay.
If you're just repaving, no. But if you're adding a huge addition to your parking lot, then yeah, you have to add the parking lot landscaping, for example.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Does the ordinance outline timelines for getting the work done? But then a certain timeframe, obviously, we only, we have a limited growing season or planting season and
Yep.
You know, a project may, they might get the building done in November, but they obviously can't plant trees at that time. So is there a certain timeframe that's allowed? Because I, I know in experience we've run in before where that was kind of holding up the show was getting the landscape done. I guess a similar question, is there some type of timeframe, you know, they put stuff in and stuff dies in two years. Is that covered or is it, once they've got it in, if stuff dies and someone comes and just pulls them out? Is there any way to make sure that the landscape plan stays the landscape plan?
Yeah. I'll start with your first question first, then you might need to remind me of the second question in a moment here. But as far as the timing for installation of landscaping, that's primarily found in this section C, landscape plan required. The way that it works is that a landscape plan is required when somebody applies for a building permit. And so part of their building permit application, in addition to their building plans, their site plans, they also have to have landscaping plans that get submitted to the building inspections department as part of their building permit application. Planning staff will review the landscape plan in addition to their building plans to make sure it meets the ordinance. If it does meet, we'll, you know, approve it. Eventually, all the different reviewing departments will sign off on the building permit application. A building permit is issued. And then they get to work building the, the building. When they reach back out to the city, you know, after they do their inspections, they'll be asking for a certificate of occupancy. And that's kind of the, the trigger point when staff goes out and does a final inspection of the property. And so part of that would, would involve planning staff going out to count the plant units to make sure that they planted what they said they were going to plant as part of their building permit application. In the warm months, that's pretty straightforward. You know, they're, they're planted and we count and sign off, they issue the, the CO. In winter months, though, there is an option that's outlined here that they, they can request basically a temporary certificate of occupancy. With, they'll provide us something in writing, basically a timeline for when they're going to install the landscaping, you know, in spring. And so, let's see. They may, staff may approve a deferral of up to eight months in order to account for, you know, the cold months where you can't actually plant the landscaping. And so it's just a matter of tracking the temporary COs. They'll have to reach back out to us in the spring or the early summer, once the landscaping is complete, for us to complete that inspection and for them to get their final certificate of occupancy. So does that answer your first question?
Yep.
And then your second question was?
Well, the same question is kind of related to, if you want to call warranty, you know,
Yeah.
they plant stuff and invariably something dies or whatever.
Yeah.
I, I mean, we don't want to be the landscape police and have to go around all the time and check on it, but
Yep.
Supposed to be more significant if you had a, like a row of trees die versus just one tree or something, but is there any kind of, I won't say recourse, but is there any type of follow-up on, you know, year or two after some of the stuff dies and
Yep.
it's not replaced or whatever?
Yeah. There's some general language just about, you know, maintaining the property. It's, you know, up to the owner or the proprietor of the property to make sure that their property is up to code. And so we're not going to have anything specific that says, you know, no more than five percent of your landscaping, you know, is allowed to die. It's complaint-driven. And so if there's a hole, you know, landscape buffer that's required and it all dies and we get a complaint because now the buffer's gone, you know, we'll, we'll work with the court enforcement offices to, to go out and take a look. And if we've, if they're found to be in violation, they're required to have landscaping, it's no longer there, then we would follow up like any other court enforcement and issue a letter. Hopefully that brings compliance. If not, you know, there's remedies that are outlined in the, in the ordinance in terms of getting the, the compliance.
Okay, so, so part of the, part of the deal would be is a developer builder builds the property, does landscapes, all that. And of course, he transfers ownership to the owner of the property, whomever that is. Are they made aware of the fact that there is landscape requirements and, or should they be just aware of it just because, you know, that's the way they receive the property? I'm just, I just don't want to see a situation where we get certain properties where, you know, stuff isn't done right or dies off and nothing's ever done, you know, to keep it to what we envisioned, I guess, for the property.
Yeah. So it's, it's ultimately up to the, you know, the property owner to, to make sure their property is in compliance. And so there's nothing that would require, you know, upon sale that a, you know, the seller has to inform the buyer of landscaping requirements. You know, it's just like, they're the same as any other zoning requirement. So it's kind of up, up to their, up to the owner to kind of be aware.
Oh, that's fine. I'm just, just more curious than questioning, I guess. It's, again, it's a tough thing. We're not going to go out and police every property and look at all their plantings. I mean, at least if they're trying on the front end, can deal with the back end results, so.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think staff would agree. We're not really staffed to do that level, you know, enforcement and policing. And so that's the main thing is if we can get it installed from the get-go, you know, we're, we're kind of ninety, ninety-five percent of the way there right there.
Thanks.
You have a question here? You know, back when you were talking about screening, you know, RVs, boats, that kind of thing. Now, if, if someone brings out their Bison trailer that they used for tailgating for the entire football season and has it in their driveway, are they required to screen that somehow or are they limited and they have to move it to the street or kind of deal with something like that?
Yeah.
That's what we're coming.
Yep. So I'll, I'll try and find that section really, really quick. So that would be handled by the section four dash four four six here, parking waterized vehicles and equipment in residential districts. Essentially, if you were to read through these standards, there is a distinction made between, I think it's vehicles or equipment longer than twenty-five feet. And so if it's over twenty-five feet in length, like a large RV, for example, it is a little bit more restrictive where, you know, you can't park it in your front driveway year-round. You can do it, you know, every, I forget what the timelines are. You know, for a couple of weeks or something like that, every once a, every couple of months or something. You know, I think the, and we, we haven't made any changes to any of, of these requirements. This is strictly restructuring for, for comprehension purposes. And so if there is concern, you know, now is the time, you know, to, to, you know, tinker with some of that stuff. But if it's less than twenty-five feet in length, it's treated very much like a car. And so you can park it in your front driveway. If it's parked in, you know, a side yard or rear yard, certain areas, it needs to be screened. Yep. Any other questions for staff?
No. This is an, this is a public hearing, so then I'll open up the public comments, questions, input. Seeing none, close that section. I read through it. It is a nice streamlining of the codes. So hats off. That's a tough one to rewrite. It's kind of like signs. Not quite there. Alright, well, I would accept, I'd accept the motion. It's been moved and seconded. Keep it down over there, will you? It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment to title for regarding landscaping, screening, and outdoor storage. Any further discussion before vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Amendment passed, or we are recommending approval by the city council next month. Okay, next item, the initiation of the growth area master plan project.
Alright. So this item was on the discussion agenda here last month, and we didn't have a whole lot, lot of time on our discussion agenda last month. So I've got a few slides here just to walk through the proposed growth area master plan project. Just to start with, kind of a summary of how we got here. Just like the zoning ordinance amendments that we're working through, the growth area master plan was also identified on that planning needs assessment that was done a couple of years ago. The growth area master plan was identified as a midterm priority project. However, since we're complete or making our way through the, the short-term project list, we're kind of at a point where we're going to be transitioning now to some of these midterm projects. And so the growth area master plan was identified as, you know, probably the most important one that we'd like to get underway sooner rather than later when it comes to these projects. And so we are, we've talked about it months back as well as last month. But long story short, I mean, summary, the project, well, the purpose of the project is to produce a growth area master plan to strategically guide the city's future development in an orderly and coordinated manner that is both fiscally sustainable and consistent with the community's vision for the future of West Fargo. And so the way we think about this is we have a comprehensive plan, the West Fargo two point oh comprehensive plan. The comp plan is very broad in nature, does not get into very much detail on any one subject. And so we're thinking about the growth area master plan as essentially an addendum to the comprehensive plan. Where we're diving a little bit deeper into some of the growth-related aspects of that plan document. The two point oh comprehensive plan was all, is unique in that it did not include things like a future land use map, which is something that you might find in a more traditional comprehensive plan. And so that's kind of a high-level summary of, of the plan. In order to kind of advance that purpose, we've laid out several objectives, including your packet here tonight is a project summary. It's kind of that four-page document that we've talked about in the past, but it's our attempt at trying to lay out a general and a purpose and scope of work for what this effort would look like. And so to that end, there are four objectives that we've laid out here. The first one is to better understand the future growth demand and long-term fiscal implications of today's growth decisions. I should say too, each of these objectives has a neat little tagline here. And so this tagline is we want to expand the knowledge base. So we just want to get a better handle on what the potential, you know, timing and location of future development demand will likely be. That'll help set the stage for some of the decisions that the city will have to make in the future, whether it's planning for future, you know, growth, excuse me, zoning and subdivision decisions, or whether it's capital improvement planning for future extension of city services or construction of streets, sewers, water, what have you. The second objective is to establish and map out a phase plan for the city's physical growth based on the city's comprehensive plan. The tagline here is to flesh out the vision. So as I mentioned, we're trying to kind of go a little bit deeper into what was covered in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan has a number of overarching, high-level goals and vision for the community that were developed when that plan was put together. But we want to get a little bit more into the nuts and bolts in terms of what does that actually look like on the ground? How does the, how do these goals map out, if you were to map out the, the future, you know, street network, development patterns? That sort of thing. And so like I mentioned, the, one of the deliverables that we hope to get out of this is something like a future land use map. There's probably a series of different maps for, for a lot of different topics, whether it's the infrastructure, the land use, what have you. The third objective here is to collaboratively manage growth decisions amongst dispersed stakeholder entities. The tagline here is to improve the collaboration. And so the emphasis here is just recognizing that growth decisions, a community's growth, doesn't take place in any one entity. And so we're primarily looking at, for example, the school district, the park district. When a city or a school district makes a decision to locate a new school at a certain location, it does have a ripple effect of on the development of the community. And so there needs to be roads, there needs to be utilities in place to service the school. You know, neighborhoods develop around elementary schools, for example. And so we're just recognizing the interrelatedness of those decisions and making sure that we're well-coordinated with some of our partner entities, partner local governments, as well as the, some of the landowners and the development community, making sure we have a understanding of what the development community is, what they see for. what they see for, um, demand in the market, um, the conversations that they've had. A lot of the, you know, farms around town in our growth area likely have, um, options for, you know, developers likely have options for a lot of that land. They're already starting to formulate some, you know, sense of what they'd like to, um, develop in these areas. And so making sure that we're talking with them and what they're proposing and what, uh, the city's looking at are can kind of mesh in the end. Uh, the fourth, uh, objective is to develop the tools and action steps necessary, uh, for managing future growth. And so the tagline there is to establish the tools. And that's just done it to encapsulate, um, the deliverables, some of the recommendations that will likely come out of this, whether it's recommendations for, you know, potentially changes to our, um, zoning and subdivision development regulations, or perhaps recommendations when it comes to, you know, use of, um, incentives, um, whether it's tax incentives, use of special assessments, some of those, you can kind of refer to them sometimes as the carrots and the sticks that the city has, uh, the levers that the city, you know, can pull or not pull when it comes to helping to to guide development. Um, so some of those recommendations and some of the decision-making framework, uh, that will will come out of this. Ultimately, that's what we're looking for is a a guide to help you all, Planning and Zoning Commission, and then ultimately the City Commission when it comes to individual, uh, decision points, whether it's a application that comes before this board or, um, other decisions on budgeting, capital improvement projects, all those different decisions. We want to make sure that they're all kind of well-aligned and that we're, we have the proper framework, um, that we're kind of running those, those different questions through when we're making those decisions. So, um, those are the the four main objectives here. Also, uh, outlined in more depth within the packet are some of these key issues. This is just a quick kind of summary of of many of those issues. But we do have some existing infrastructure, uh, capacity and and challenges. And that's more specific to, um, sanitary sewer, for example, is one of the big, uh, pinch points when it comes to, um, the serviceability of our future growth areas. Just due to our, you know, flat nature and our reliance on lift stations, different things, um, as well as some of the capacity limitations that we have with agreements with the City of Fargo, um, for taking our sanitary sewer, um, or our sewage. There are, uh, certain pinch points, and so we need need to identify, how are we going to address some of those pinch points in order to, uh, make some of these future growth areas, um, marketable, undevelopable, and how we're going to service these these areas when we do have development, uh, demand. Uh, the second one there, land use and development policy uncertainty. Um, that goes back to just not having a very, um, detailed or not having a land, a future land use map, not having any sort of, uh, policy in place that that, um, that communicates what the the city's vision is for some of these areas. And so, uh, developers don't like uncertainty. That makes them nervous. And so the more we can kind of, uh, you know, collaboratively work with developers and others, stakeholders to, um, develop some land use policy and eliminate some of that uncertainty, um, the better it will be for for all parties involved. Uh, the second bullet point there, or excuse me, the third one, fiscal sustainability and development costs. Obviously, special assessments is something that's, um, kind of a perennial issue. I think even there were some comments from from this board, um, months back when this was first discussed, um, wanting to kind of, uh, look into alternative options to special assessments. And so certainly there are other, um, ways, other communities across the country do, um, finance some of the improvements necessary for, um, uh, service expansion in different ways. And so there's some opportunity here to to start to explore some of that as well. Uh, and then ultimately making sure that development decisions are fiscally sustainable into the long term. And so, you know, what makes sense today, we want to make sure that we're also thinking long-term. Someday, like we're experiencing right now with some of the neighborhoods near downtown, the infrastructure has reached its useful lifespan. A lot of the infrastructure needs to be completely, you know, ripped out and replaced. Well, we might not have the necessary, um, um, you know, land value and different things to help pay for some of that. And so just thinking about that, um, that fiscal, um, component. And then lastly, coordination and consensus among stakeholders. Uh, that kind of goes back to the the need for coordination amongst other department or governmental entities, um, developers, the public in general, uh, making sure that we're, uh, we're well-coordinated and communicating throughout the life of this project. So with all that in mind, uh, we also, we, within the, um, the summary in your packet here, we've outlined or started to outline, uh, some scope of work elements. And this is starting to kind of take those issues, take the the objectives that we're working with and to kind of start to mold those into what will eventually become, um, a request for proposals document or a RFP document. We would be looking to partner with a a third-party consultant team, something multi bliss, multidisciplinary in nature, uh, just due to the the scope and general complexity of of some of these topics. It's, that's what it's going to require. And so, um, some of the elements that we're, we'll be looking for that consultant team to to kind of take on and manage would be, you know, the project management overall, making sure that they're, uh, they're coordinating their own team. They're responsible for making sure that things, um, you know, project deadlines are met, that they're staying in budget, um, with oversight from the city, obviously. Um, number two there, we'd be looking for some type of a a robust public stakeholder, um, participation plan. Again, making sure that we're identifying where are the public input opportunities for this project? When, when are there, one of the check-in points with the Planning and Zoning Commission or the City Commission? A lot of those different factors should be mapped out kind of at the the onset of the project. Uh, number three there just talks about some of the planned focus areas. And so these are some of the elements that we anticipate being involved in the the development of the plan. Four is this the development of the plan document itself. What does that look like? What are, what are the different elements of that? And then approval and adoption process. Again, we're looking at this as somewhat of an addendum to the comprehensive plan. And so we want to make sure that we're adopting it as such, um, in compliance or in in alignment with the North Dakota Century Code for, um, master plans. And lastly, plan implementation. Uh, we want to make sure that this is an actionable plan and that we have a really, you know, a solid roadmap. Once the consultant, you know, packs up and leaves town, we want to make sure that we're, you know, we we have the the immediate next steps well-mapped out and we're kind of already underway in terms of making, you know, some of the key, um, changes or, um, recommendations that ultimately come out of this effort. So this is a, you know, very high level at the moment, but, uh, just a summary here. And then the, uh, study area, I know this, uh, that was another comment that I think came from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that we did make a slight tweak to the study area since this was last discussed, um, specifically in regards to the I ninety-four corridor. I think previously we were, we were primarily looking at areas, um, within the alignment of the FM diversion project. But certainly with, uh, with the proximity to Mapleton and some of the development of that community, as well as the, uh, potential for, uh, MetroCog is currently studying, um, a reliever route for the interstate system. Some of the, uh, kind of a bypass route, um, which might follow the alignment of the FM diversion. We see value in adding, um, the I ninety-four corridor as as part of the primary focus area or primary study area. So the map that you see on the, on the screen here, the red areas is the primary focus area for this study. And then the blue areas are some of the more secondary areas. We're more fo- more focused, or we want the the efforts to be primarily focused on areas that are, um, along this, the periphery of the city's existing city limits. We want to make sure we're taking a look at the city's lagoon property, um, as well as some of the exclusive extraterritorial jurisdiction within the FM diversion alignment and the I ninety-four corridor, as I mentioned. And then the blue areas are basically everything that's left over that's within the city's extraterritorial jurisdictions.
Does the scope also include the possibility of changing the boundaries for what's extraterritorial jurisdiction and what is within city limits?
It could potentially. Um, I know some of the things that we're, we've identified more specifically are things like an annexation framework or strategy. And so what are the trigger points when the city would consider annexing additional land? You know, how do we make that yes-no decision when, how do we make sure it's, you know, again, fiscally, makes fiscal sense for the city to expand those, um, services? And then along with the, uh, annexation comes the opportunity for expanding the extraterritorial area. And so those, those two things are somewhat linked, uh, in that, insofar as, um, the extraterritorial area can only be or has to be within so many miles of your, um, corporate limits. So that is definitely a a possibility to include, not called out specifically, though. Uh, so that's the the study area. And then, uh, I think the last thing I have here is just the anticipated timeline. So right now, quarter three of twenty twenty-four, we're just, um, in the project scoping and initiation approval process right now. Uh, quarter four, we'd be looking for the, um, kind of the next step after this, uh, meeting here would be to, uh, assuming a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, we'd be looking to bring this to the City Commission to, um, basically give us the green light to go ahead and issue the RFP and to initiate, um, initiate the project otherwise. Assume that happens, uh, the next step then is to put together and publish a request for proposals in order to solicit, um, proposals from consultant teams. And there would be kind of an interview process there before we'd come back to the City Commission for approval of a a project contract. Uh, we anticipate the majority of this project taking place in year twenty twenty-five, and then ultimately project completion in twenty twenty-six. So roughly, once a consultant is on board and the the kind of main efforts are underway, anticipating about a year timeline from from start to finish, give or take. So with that, um, overview, the suggested motion here tonight is to, uh, recommend the City Commission direct staff to draft and publish a request for proposals for the development of a growth area master plan, and then to, uh, otherwise initiate this project. So with that, having to answer any questions you may have for staff, otherwise we've got a suggested motion for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question.
Big audience, so we don't have to be.
Question, um, with these consultants, would you envision them looking at the existing two-point-oh plan or just strictly focusing on the undeveloped, um, areas, both within the limits of the city and outside?
Yeah, so we would definitely use the 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 existing comprehensive plan as a jumping off point. So part of the initial stages of this would be kind of a, you know, an exploratory phase where it would be kind of part, you know, I don't want to call it a literature review, but a review of existing, you know, policies and plan documents that we have. Um, it would be some of the early stages of the, um, stakeholder engagement and and input. It would be a review of some of the, you know, issues that we have identified. It would kind of be the consultant's opportunity to listen to and to to kind of digest and understand, get a, get a lay of the land, if you will, on what's going on in town. And so one of the things that they might find and what we'd like them to identify if they do sense this is, when they look at the the overarching vision and the goals of the comprehensive plan, are those, you know, still consistent with what they're hearing from the public today? At least, is that still consistent with what they're hearing from you all? Or is that still consistent with, you know, what the City Commission would like to see? And so if they do identify where there is, you know, maybe some some differences between some of the existing policy that we have, um, adopted today and what they're hearing with some of the, you know, public input and stakeholder input, you know, that's something that we'll want to talk about as part of this process. And then, you know, it kind of, the process needs to kind of direct the the process to a certain degree. But, you know, there could potentially be something that is identified where we want to make a slight amendment to the two-point-oh plan or something, or maybe amend a a goal or something like that. It's not outside of the the realm of possibilities. But primarily today, we're looking at it as more of an addendum. So we're not anticipating those things changing or being any amendments to the two-point-oh plan. We're looking to mainly add on and kind of, again, flesh out that that vision.
How many years old is two-point-oh? Is that six, seven years old?
I think most of that work was done in twenty seventeen and then final adoption was early twenty eighteen.
So, you know, probably needs a two-point-one, you know, just at least a a review of those recommendations. And I think just off the top of my head, his main avenue, there's been absolutely nothing happening there. And then I don't know if there will be, I don't know if there is any better idea than what they got, but I'm just saying. While they're looking at stuff, maybe that's something they just take a peek at and say, well, you know, that's still the best plan going forward.
Yeah, and so, and then maybe we'll have to kind of take a look, closer look at our study area here. But we do want, you know, to look at areas within city limits. And so that should include some areas of Main Avenue. I know we've had, you know, discussions with, um, the, uh, the fairgrounds, for example. They've got different ideas. They've got a lot of, you know, vacant land out there and, you know, different. So there might be some opportunity spots, for example, you know, right, right adjacent, right along Main Avenue. Same with the Lagoons properties, you know, that's within city limits today, but that's part of the primary focus area. And so some of those infill and vacant spots, we do want them to to look at as part of this effort, so.
Do you have a sense of, of the consultant will cost for the making of a period?
Uh, that's something we'll need to flesh out further. Uh, but for the time being, um, we did act, we did identify three hundred thousand, um, in the capital improvement plan, in the twenty twenty-four capital improvement plan for year twenty twenty-five. So that's kind of the ballpark figure we're working with right now. And one other thing I should add to is we are, we have had conversations with the school district and park district. And there there is a potential that the park district at least might want to partner on a project like this. They might have some, you know, um, long-range planning needs that they'd like to tack on, you know, as some additional scope of work, which, you know, could potentially add some, some money to the project as well from the park district. So we're, we're still kind of pursuing some of those conversations. And then maybe just to add on to that, too, part of the RFP, it'll be a competitive process. And so, you know, different consultants will pro- provide us with proposals. There will be a cost proposal required as part of that. And so the, uh, the budget will be one of the criteria used to make a selection. And so, you know, it won't be the only criteria, but, um, that's one of the, uh, the factors that the city can can use to make a determination on who to go with. And then there is a likely, we'll kind of bake in the opportunity for some additional negotiations. And so if the proposals come back slightly higher than the city's comfortable with, there is the opportunity to negotiate the scope of work to, you know, remove certain elements that we maybe not, aren't as, um, important in order to get to a price tag that we're comfortable with. Yep.
The selection process, are we going to have similar structure as the downtown?
Uh, not quite sure on the specifics yet, but something similar. Might not be exactly the same, but something similar is what we are anticipating right now.
You put that slide up, that the recommended motion, suggested motion.
Andy. Yep.
Thank you for doing that, by the way. Any other questions, discussion? Do I have to close the public?
Technically, there's no public hearing with this one.
Technically, no, okay. I would accept the motion.
Sure. I'll do the recommend, City Commission direct staff to draft and publish a request for proposals for the development of a growth area master plan and to otherwise initiate this project.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, recommend to the City Commission this project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That's our recommendation.
Thank you.
Quick question.
Good job on framing this up.
Quick question, just pop in my mind. Did the, uh, underpass over here on Ninth Street, did that, that got a grant, didn't it? Got approved?
It did.
Well, that, that will certainly have a impact on potential changes in traffic flow and development. So I think the timing on this is.
I'm sorry, what, uh, an overpass or?
Uh, they got a grant, the city got money, I don't know, from the federal in- infrastructure program or whatever.
Ninth Street Northeast.
Put a, uh, grade, uh, separation over here by the tank farm on Ninth Street.
A bridge.
Is it a bridge?
Yes.
Okay. But anyway, allow for better traffic flow in which I would think will have some impact on development up, more up that way than, uh, say you want cutting through the old Center Street and all that stuff.
Yeah, certainly.
So the timing is pretty good on this as well, I think.
Yep. Yeah, there's a lot of need for it, and it's kind of one of the comments that we've heard. We've, we've kind of had similar discussions with, um, well, we brought to City Commission for discussion purposes at their last meeting. And then, um, EDAC, Economic Development Advisory Committee. And we have similar comments, is its timing is good. It's, I want to get, make sure we get some of this, uh, in place prior to some of the, some of these things, uh, being constructed. And primarily the FM diversion project, we want to make sure that it's complete well ahead of that, um, that point in time, so.
Are there any non-agenda items to discuss? No? All right, I'd take a motion to adjourn. Moving seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye. All right, meeting adjourned.
Side question.
We were talking about the screening and all that stuff. And there's a question.